Dwayne, you have to unt your mic. It looks like his microphone is muted. He pushed the wrong button. He pushed to the video button instead of the mute button. What is that noise in the background, Terry? It sounds like a bomb in a cartoon ticking down. Can you hear that?
All right, folks, I think we're in business here. Looks like we've got Life Size Connected, Zoom Connected. Everything's recording and streaming as of about two minutes ago. So I think we're all set to proceed.
All right, I'm going to call to order the Borough of Morrisville July 19, 2021 Borough Council Meeting. Please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Ravella? Councilman Bowers?
Here.
Councilwoman Halaho?
Here.
Councilman Nicol?
Here.
Councilman Parker?
Here.
Councilman Paul?
Here.
Councilman Robinson?
Here.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
Here.
And Councilman Yeager?
Here.
Yes, Scott Holbert on behalf of Flagrant Associates.
Thank you. All right, under announcements, I'm going to announce that we had an executive session of 6:45 just before the meeting for personnel issues for two police officers. As a result of that executive session, there will be two motions added to the end of the agenda, and I'm going to read them. Motion I, 9I, sorry, will be a motion to approve the grievance settlement agreement between the Borough and the PBA. 9J will be a motion to approve an independent medical examination for an injured police officer. And with that, I will open it up to public comment. I believe it's Don Rice.
Yeah, I'm Don Rice.
Just state your name and address, please.
Yes, Donald Rice, 343 Crown Street, Morrisville. I started working to save Williamson Park soon after Mr. McGrath's presentation in August of 2019. At that time, I was not aware of the Donated and Dedicated Properties Act. I only became aware of it in the last several months. I expect the same is true for council members. A June 2021 publication of We Can Serve PA, which was formerly the Pennsylvania Land Trust Association, entitled Parks in Perpetuity discusses this act and its relevance to preserving Pennsylvania's park. I will present a few relevant excerpts from the publication. First, the Donated and Dedicated Property Act provides that the donated or dedicated property, such Williamson Park, must stay in trust and its original use must continue unless the use is, quote, "no longer practicable or possible and has ceased to serve the public interest." Two, in the unlikely event that the court agrees that park use is no longer acceptable, practical, or possible and has ceased to serve the public interest, the municipality will still be required to replace the lands leaving the public trust with property of equal size and value for the same purpose. Three, the Pennsylvania Constitution places a fiduciary duty on Commonwealth to conserve and maintain Pennsylvania's public natural resources for the people. This obligation applies both to state government and local governments. Public lands are owned by the people, not governments. Government's role is to conserve and maintain the lands. I ask now that we are aware of the requirements of the Donated and Dedicated Property Act to withdraw from consideration of select Morrisville's development proposal for Williamson Park. The park cannot be developed. Please be fair to the citizens of Morrisville, select Morrisville and Williamson Park, and stop the consideration of park development.
One minute.
It is the right thing to do. A park is forever. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Bill Minder?
Bill Minder, 423 Crown Street. Good evening and hope you all had a nice holiday. It's nice to see you smiling faces again, in person, in person. I have two items I'd like to present. I'm here to request that council consider enacting a curfew for fireworks at about 10:00 PM. There's no good reason to set off fireworks 11:00, 12:00, or even 1 o'clock in the morning. These people have no consideration for anyone, particularly one, our vets, who live through hell and are affected by loud noises and have PTSD. What about our children who have autism? Autism and are affected by noises such as fireworks? I have a grandson who is affected by fireworks. He holds his ears, he cries for his mother, and he rolls on his bed. If you think this condition eases with time, don't believe it. My grandson is 30 years old and still affected by it. One full school seniors go to bed at 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock. This really affects their living conditions. You'll be old someday, sooner or later. Time flies by. Animals, dogs run and hide and shiver and shake during fireworks. It's very upsetting to see how these dogs are affected. And that, that's the four good reasons why to enact the curfew. The vets, children, senior citizen animals. My second item, where will a sidewalk in Pennsylvania Avenue be repaired? This is a terrible sight for merchants coming into Morrisville. It's been there so long that the people of Morrisville thinks it's a monument to someone or somebody. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what sidewalk are you talking about? What sidewalk?
In Pennsylvania, right over the canal. The bridge.
The bridge.
I'm sorry, what is wrong with it?
Take a ride up and look at it.
I'd walk by there all the time on Pennsylvania.
It's been closed for some time.
Oh, the one over by Union Street. I was thinking the bridges. I'm sorry, my mistake.
The one up here in Pennsylvania Avenue?
Yes.
Right across from Burns.
We were just talking about it, actually.
Well, very good.
Yeah.
All right, have a good evening.
Could I chime in real quick? Mr. Minder, that bridge is slated to be replaced within the next couple of years. The state is doing it. That's why it's closed. That whole thing is going to be rebuilt.
Yeah, that's a couple of years. I don't think I'll be here to see that.
Well, I got a letter in the mail from the state because I live close enough to it. And they just, it was a notification that work is going to start soon. I mean, I would love to redo that sidewalk, but the cost to redo that sidewalk right now, only to have it torn up in a year or two when they replace the bridge, doesn't, you know, doesn't seem cost effective. And the one across the street on the western side of Pennsylvania Avenue, I walked down that, and, I mean, that's still a serviceable sidewalk. So.
Yeah, but who tore it up or put all the cones around it? Now you...
Well, that's because it's not safe to walk on because you could fall into the canal, maybe, if you walk over there. That's why they shut it down for safety reasons. Because they're going, and then the bridge is going to be, they're replacing that whole bridge. But the state is doing it. And it's not like we can't go to the state right now and say, hey, we need you to replace this bridge tomorrow. They'll laugh at us, you know, when they get around to replacing it. It's, hey, I don't think it's scheduled to be rebuilt.
Well, I think, I'm not going to blame you or anybody, but whoever condemned the bridge or whatever they did to put those cones up should have had some sense to say when we're going to put it back up. I mean, you can't take something down and four or five years later, put it up. I mean, it's been how much, two years, like that? I don't know, roughly.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson, you said you got the letter from PennDOT, just so I'm clear.
Yes, I got a letter. I don't know if it was from PennDOT. It was from the state of Pennsylvania. And it was one of those ones that, I guess, a form letter that they nail out to all the people that live close to where they're going to do a project, just notifying that, you know, the bridge is going to be replaced. I believe it said early, they're going to start with late 2021 or early 2022. And they were basically just, I guess there's a law that they have. I'm probably with the, I don't know whether they have to notify me or whether it was just a courtesy to let me know that, you know, and I'm sure that everyone else that lives in that area received the letter too. Because it looked like it was...
I also believe it was in...
I received one.
Yeah, I think, I received one as well. They also had mentioned they needed to intrude on some of the property on one side of it.
I believe that they also included minutes, if I remember correctly. We also got a letter that included minutes.
I don't know.
From one of their meetings.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Next, we have Deborah Colgan.
Hi, good evening, Deborah Colgan, 120 West Hendrickson Avenue. As we passively wait for select Morrisville to present the next step, we should be having, as a community, a frank discussion on the ethics and legalities of developing Williamson Park as a commercial space. Creating a legacy for public space is an act that requires absolute faith, one that is hoped that future generations will respect and treasure, that when accepted, lives on without betrayal. What is the value of Williamson Park? We can measure in dollars, then we can read its land value, then we can add in what the heirs and the church lease will need to be repaid. Won't this action be legally challenged? What are the costs to defend a taking of an actively used public park land? But more important to consider is what is the value of Williamson Park to Morrisville? Should Morrisville promises made 86 years ago mean something to us now? What are the intangible, unmeasurable benefits that the park provides? Isn't there value in exposing children to a variety of activities? A child playing baseball gets to see tennis. A baseball player gets to watch hoops. Maybe they can make new friends and expand their worlds. The value of Williamson Park cannot be measured by the number of visitors alone. Sometimes it's bustling with many people engaged in activities. Other times, when there are few visitors, it's a quiet green space where you can see magnificent sunrises or quietly picnic. It provides calm in a busy region. The park works for us even when we are not there. It absorbs stormwater, protecting nearby properties. It filters out impurities, which helps protect the near extinct land excursion, which spawn right there. It contributes positively to climate change solutions. It's a dark spot at night so birds can navigate and rest on their long migrations. Parks increase property values and lower crime rates. Morrisville taxpayers have consistently and overwhelmingly supported open space initiatives. We've also supported farm preservation programs, even though we're not farmers. We know, we understand why they are good to have. They have value to us. Let's all understand the true value of Williamson Park, and as we do, we'll understand the true cost of this project. Reject this disastrous idea now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Joshua Kunst.
Kunst.
Kunst, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. The very normal English phonetic pronunciation. Very interesting.
Name and address in three minutes.
I'm Joshua Kunst. I live at 40 Union Street, right over there. And I figured today I would, I write poetry. I'm so sorry to everybody in the world that I'm the person who writes poetry. But I happen to write one. I was like, it's kind of a little bit in theme and spirit, relevant to other topics I've discussed. It'll come to nobody's surprise. And hopefully, if I get through that, I have another small topic that I'd like to address. So I'm going to read everybody a poem. It's called "My Pop's Woods." "I was a fast learner. By age five, I knew someday my grandpa would likely die before me. I was right. That day would come, and I can no longer call him. Now, to be fair, we did not have much to bond over. An old mechanic and a tech addict youth apparently don't have much topics to talk on. But he did show me around the woods, how to skip stones at the creek, and he'd point to lands in passing towns and tell me what once was. I didn't know why he did that last part. In my mind, I simply needed to know what is, not was. But now I see. He was pointing to his memory, his world, his fleeting spirit and time. And though humans are meant to come and go, he wanted me to know what doesn't, what we can always share, the land. For it goes nowhere, and so neither would he. I knew one day I would have to grieve the death of my grandpa. I did not know I would have to grieve the death of his woods as well." And so I thought that that might be a nice sentiment in tandem with some of the things I've discussed before with the council and the kind of emotional burden that just society's ever pushing forward in progress, progress, right, in quotes, has upon, is our ability to relate intergenerationally, right? That we are creatures of our environment, and we learn and relate through these ideas of ancestry and our connection to the land as kind of possibly stereotypical or derivative that is of a notion.
One minute, sir.
Sure. So I can finish up. The other weird topic is I was just kind of curious if anybody's been hearing all that really loud music coming over from Trenton, and if we're doing anything about that? That like, I can be over here and walk to the canal and through this entire area, hear music that's so loud that's rattling my windows in the house. And I just wanted to know if anybody else is experiencing this, if I'm hallucinating, and should have been looking into that before bringing it to a council meeting, or if anybody has been doing anything about that. And also, a small proposition for the fireworks thing. I was wondering if we have asked them to post any signs or whenever purchases are made, kind of thing, for them to designate overtly in some capacity where legal areas are for fireworks to be launched, being that they're sometimes launched in other areas, and this might put pressure on local purchasers to find their way to the appropriate areas? Because I remember last meeting, they were saying that there is actual appropriate land places where people can use fireworks. I just thought that that might be a nice way of trying to push that into the minds of people who are purchasing. Anyway, thank you very much for my time.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
I've received a number of calls about the music. I'm not sure what's, I don't believe it's coming from, well, old Cat Mandu.
Actually, I don't believe it is either. When Friday, I was leaving the area, and I was going on 29, and I actually saw a setup by the waterfront on Newark. I mean, in Trenton. It was just, it just looked like a pop-up DJ event. And they had speakers and rather large speakers out of the back of their SUV and stuff like that. So that would be the location.
Are they on the grassy area between 29 and the river itself, right?
Yeah.
Well, what can we do? I mean, we had this problem with Cat Mandu years ago. We even talked about putting speakers on a barge in the middle of the river to send the music backwards. But I don't know. Apparently, it's very...
Yeah. Well, this one was just like, it was between the Calhoun Street Bridge and the Trenton Makes Bridge. There's a grassy area on the other side of the guardrail that they're able to go down with a vehicle and get access to the grassy area by the river. And that's where they were set up. So I imagine if you're hearing it that loud over here, that's where they're at. But... I'm sure.
So Chief, what is it that we can do? Like, you've talked to the people at Cat Mandu. Have you talked to the people at Duck Island?
Duck Island's a community.
Well, what you said, like, it's coming...
It's a pop-up thing.
Oh, it's a pop-up thing.
If they were to call the non-emergency number, would the department be able to reach out to the state police? Since that would be... No, I don't know. I totally agree with you. I think the problem is getting another municipality in a different state to do something for us. We can try to reach out to the mayor of Trenton. I mean, that's a...
It's a start.
It's a start. We can try. All right. All right, that's it for public comment.
Can I just ask one more thing, as long as Mr. Minder's here? So Chief, Mr. Minder asked about fireworks to stop at 10 o'clock. Would that be redundant with our noise ordinance? Or is that something that we could do?
10 o'clock, it says the number thrown out there.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm just using your example. Pardon me?
Pardon me.
But state law supersedes us, right?
Yeah, correct, yeah. We could always make laws more restrictive. We couldn't make them less restrictive.
Okay, I think that's something we should do. I've had a number of residents complain as well. Especially, like, some residents said it's 2 o'clock in the morning, and they're like, woken up out of bed, and they don't know what just happened.
I will say it's already illegal to do that in town. And I would agree that we can do something more restrictive. I don't agree that it will really impact anything because the people that are doing this are already doing it when they're not supposed to be doing it. So that's where the redundancy would be.
Well, if this body decides that we want to be more restrictive, I would also like to expand that 150-foot perimeter because that, I mean, there's almost no place, unless you go to the two parks, there's no place in town where you're going to make the 150, right? So, and...
Already existed like that for 40s away from home.
It does.
Yeah, it says 150 feet, which I think...
Any structure though.
Yet we still have people setting them off in the middle of streets.
Right.
Around all the houses, and nothing is done. So I don't see where that's going to work either.
We still need people to call the police when they happen.
Sure.
And I don't think a lot of that's happening.
Absolutely do, but on the 4th of July, when you got 15 people setting them off, the police can't do it at one time, and that's the problem.
Right.
It's happened here again this year. I've been here 10 years, and it hasn't gotten any better. It's getting worse, even though we have laws.
And we don't have 10 officers on to be able to go to all those spots either. I get, I understand that.
They do what they can, I get that. The worst thing Pennsylvania did was legalize them. That was the downfall at all.
All right, we're going to move on. We're going to move on to Action Item 6, which is Approval of the Minutes, 6A. Approval of the Minutes for the Borough Council Regular Meeting of May 17, 2021. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Your motion is second, discussion.
I just have a quick question. I'd like to have it checked. I don't know. I think it said that I mentioned Susan Miller, not Susan Taylor. Forget what page that was on. When they were talking about, yeah, it was on page three. We were talking about the neighbors of Dave Nae, who wanted to put up a plaque. I said that I had contacted Susan. I thought I said Taylor, but it's typed in Miller. So that'd be the only change I would see. If we could just check on that and approve it with that change if necessary.
Anyone else?
Page, page three, 1, 2, 3, fourth paragraph.
All right, hearing no further comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, stentions. Motion passes. Moving on to seven, Finance, 7A, the Treasurer's Report. Everybody got a copy of that? 7B, it's a call for a motion to approve the bill list.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion.
I have just a couple of questions, if I may. There was a bill paid to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a right-of-way charge to the DCNR. Do anybody know what that is about?
I don't know, but I would venture a good guess. It has to do with the crossing here on Broad Street, or the canal, that project.
Oh, you mean by the 711, back that?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And then, second question is, there was a dumping fee. Now, John, I was going to ask this if John comes up. I know our contract says that we get one free dumping fee, a free dumping that Republic would pay for. But we had a bill for $764 that we did. And I was just wondering, have we already used our other dump? Or...
I'm not sure. We do, I know we do get one. I'm not sure why. I think that bill would have been turned into Republic, I think is how we did it. I'm not sure if we've done that, or, I didn't have two dumps in one month. I know that. We can look into it and see and make sure.
Okay. Get reimbursed if necessary, right?
Yeah, I just don't know. I don't see them, that's why. I don't see those bills, so.
Okay.
But we can look into it for sure.
All right, thank you. So Republic was supposed to be here last week, or last month, and they're not, didn't show up. They're not here this month. And the garbage issue isn't getting any better. Is there a reason they didn't show up this month to give us a discussion?
No one asked them to come. And the reason they didn't come last time is, from the email that I was given, they had the wrong date on their calendar.
Well, I would have just assumed they'd reschedule. They asked for that presentation, no?
Yes, they did, and I don't know how they got it wrong. That's what I was told.
So how about, I'll be one from councils to ask to have them at our next meeting.
Yeah, I agree. I think they should show up. You could just send that in email if you don't like...
Since we brought up the subject of Republic, which I was going to bring up later, it's also in the contract that we can find them every day, that they don't pick up. And I think that we should start maybe keeping better track and find them and use that tool if we have to. Yeah, there were people on Ohio Avenue that did not get their garbage picked up. I forget if it was Monday and they had to wait till Thursday, or if it was Thursday and it sat there all weekend to Monday. But I walk the town, and I see it myself. Garbage is just not getting picked up, and I don't know why. Whole streets are being missed. You've seen the emails.
Point of order. We have a... We're getting a little bit off track. Way off. Anything else? The bills, Nancy?
Pardon me? No, no, that was it.
Anybody else? All right, roll call, Virginia, please.
Yes. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Halaho?
Yes.
Mr. Nicol?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to eight, reports. Mayor's report. Since the mayor's not here, we're going to move on to 8B, police chief's report.
Good evening, everyone. I guess we need to speak about Flyers Den, July 4th at 1:43 a.m. They had an after-hours party, which I was not aware of. The gentleman who runs the place told me he promised that he would let me know, but he didn't. So there's approximately 300 people in the parking lot between there, 7-Eleven, up and down Washington Ave. Ended up, one person got shot in the leg. He was a 31-year-old male from Trenton. There was a second bail shot approximately at the same time, who also showed up at a hospital in Trenton by a private auto. He still, he says he was shot in Trenton, so. But the one gentleman that was shot here did not cooperate. With that being said, I did contact the owner of the Flyers Den and he has never returned any of my phone calls. July 9th, Sip and Spin was going to have a stripper night. I was able to find out about that and went over and spoke to the gentleman and got that camp set right away. That would have been another ugly crowd outside, considering the Sip and Spin probably could only fit about 20 people in there. The rest of the clubs, the one on Plaza Boulevard, the lounge, he's not had a lot of people there. He might be getting the message. Your Hookah Lounge seems to be getting the message now that the, also between the legal action and the parking lot has started putting up polls to start chaining that off at nighttime, which for the parking lot is a good thing. But what I'm afraid of is the people may float into the neighborhood. So it's sort of like a double-edged sword with that situation. So we're hoping that he's gotten the message and he's complying with the law. Like I said, the numbers have been better there. Besides that, crime still stays down 40% year-to-date. And that's, everything else is okay. Questions?
Chief, on the sip and, on the sip and spin, I saw the code enforcement also issued a cease and desist. Is that correct for that use?
I don't know if he issued a cease and desist. I know he sent a letter to Elizabeth, the lady who owns the building, after I talked to him about that. But he never went inside the building nor put a poster or anything on the door now.
Okay, I think it just said he issued a cease and desist letter. So I assume he wouldn't post it on the door, but.
Usually they do. Like, we just put a cease and desist order, a stop order on the old muffler shop, so. No, but I went over there. I went into the place and talked to the owner.
Okay, thanks.
So this is the second event where there would be 200 people in a parking lot. What is the process for the officers to dismantle that before something like the 130 shooting happened?
There's not a whole lot you can do with only two officers. I would have to call my whole department in and start moving people out. But with that, it's, you're violating a lot of people's rights. They're just standing there and watching. Some people, there's no doubt, there's a lot of drinking, a lot of smoking. But there's not, you know.
Well, there was a.
Prepare to maintain the peace.
The residents were telling me that they were outside drinking in the parking lots.
Like you said, they were.
Yeah, so, I mean, that to me is not keeping the peace. I mean, there are laws about that. Isn't there like backup that could be called and disperse these crowds?
It's going to be a tough thing to do. In this day of age, you call in other police departments and start pushing people out of the parking lot, you may end up with a full-out riot with some hurt, you know, police officers and hurt civilians, all for a summary violation. So it's a tough call. Very tough call. And that's why we've been trying just to keep the peace and maintain and get there and watch things, just keep things down. But remember, the officers are still answering 911 calls that whole time. It's a tough thing. This is happening all over. We're watching over Jersey now. Jersey's watching, flash mobs come up. And that's what this is. This is a flash mob. They come, they hang out, they hang out in the parking lot, they. This gentleman that night actually gave out tickets for an after-hours party. I think it comes back down to your code enforcement has to go in there and say, this is not what you advertised and gave to our borough as being what you're operating as. He's operating as a sound studio and in the front, a t-shirt place. Now he's running private parties. That's not what he signed onto the dotted line for.
I agree. I don't think our code is doing a good job in doing these things, preventing them, monitoring them.
Code's not there to prevent them.
Yeah, I have to disagree. I mean, if it's, if it's a situation where we're saying that it's dangerous for police to be there and push people around, to suggest that we should send code enforcement in there to push people around doesn't sound right. I'm not saying you said that. I'm not saying you said that, sir.
But what they have to do is if they are advertising they are a t-shirt factory and if they are bringing in people as a party place and as a venue to have people, they have to shoot non-traffic citations to the owner of the business and/or the owner of the building itself. So they're not, I'm not suggesting that they would go there and clear the crowd out or go during the party. That can all be done afterwards.
I'm addressing the idea that it's preventable by them. That's what I'm trying to address here.
Well, I think what the chief said, and I agree, I'm not asking that they go there that night, but preventable in when something happens, then they have to be a little more proactive.
Well, it could, it could be a little more preventable. We have that club lounge going on. That story that that guy has given to on paper about what he was and what he's promoting and things like that is complete nonsense. So I think rather than one signature on it, maybe it goes before a whole board to say, you know, this isn't what you're doing. You know, it just doesn't make any sense. And then, you know, and that's, and then we end up getting what we get. So whether that prevents it or not.
I mean, if they're not going to be honest either way, it's, it's, yeah, it's tough. You know what I mean?
They're UNO and you say sorry and go someplace else. Now, that's up to you guys now, how you handle things like that. But that, it's nonsense, you know? You can't have a business that you only have a fire code of 25 people and think that you're going to have a profitable business.
Mr. Parker, can I? This is all related. We had the ordinance about hookah lounges and bars and so forth. Is that, are we moving on that this evening?
Not tonight.
Has it been?
No, it's been advertised.
Been advertised.
It's been, we're advertising it. We've sent it to the planning commission. We have to give them a certain amount of time to review. So it will be, it'll be in front of you in August.
Still in the works.
Yeah. Following all the proper laws. But the idea of getting it out in front, getting it open, having it in front of council, brings them the pending ordinance doctrine so people can't try and run in ahead of you. And this way you can still work through it, get everything done. But the notice is out there that you're looking to change it.
And to Mike's point, people that are breaking the law are breaking the law. It's almost the same as the fireworks.
I've said a million times, you can't legislate good neighboring. You just can't. It doesn't work.
But, but the fact.
You can't legislate your bidding, you're right.
But the fact that the owner of the properties are made aware of this because they can also be fined, is that correct?
Yes.
Not just, not just the renter? Okay.
Chief, on the flyer then, have you met with code enforcement and discussed it at all? To see if you can come up with a plan?
Almost every day.
Okay. And my second comment on that would, if throwing people out is an issue, I'm just, I was trying to think of an end around. If the borough were to make that permit required parking only for that parking lot and have certain spots open by ordinance during the day or daylight hours till 9:00 or something like that, and then tow-a-way zone without a permit, is that another way to, you know, send people, send a tow truck, just send five tow trucks in there to start just towing people out if the crowd's too big?
Well, the problem is you have Washington Ave, you have Broad Street, you have 7-Eleven parking lot, and you have all over there. That night is.
I'm just trying to think. That's right in front of the building. It's a municipal lot. It's something that we can, it's our lot to own and deal with what we'd like.
Yeah, and we talked about that before, about parking in there, about, you know, putting stickers on them and have a permit parking. That's definitely a way to, you know, get around that, yes. But I really don't think that's going to solve your issue. I think that you have the other parking lots that are there. And the night that, July 4th, the night of the shooting, they were, I got here and there were still people over in the 7-Eleven parking lot, you know, an hour later. Now, still shooting the fireworks and drinking and everything else. So.
Okay.
It's a tough situation. Better, the best way to not have it is not to have a business whatsoever, unfortunately.
Can we, I'm sorry, Mr. Parker, can we restrict the hours?
The hours?
Of operation? For businesses in general?
For businesses in general, sure. I mean, but remember that some of those things would come in at non-conforming uses if they already exist. But yes, you know, under zoning, you can restrict uses. But understand, I've looked at this in other larger cities, larger municipalities, that you do run the risk of being over-inclusive and you get businesses that, some businesses need to be open at those hours and it can get very tough. And it is something, it's something you can do, but it's very tough to do.
Well, I mean, we would have to exclude bars. We'd have to exclude the 7-Eleven, the late-night food.
What happens is you end up, to make it easier, you end up picking on people and then you end up in court and then you're in deep trouble. That's what ends up, and I know where you're going and I can't disagree with you. But unfortunately, it's a hard way to tell.
Yeah, and Chief's right. It's a very difficult thing to do. It's very difficult all over and these things need to be crafted carefully to focus on specific things. And then you run into the issue where things that already exist that are the issue doesn't really deal with.
Still going to be here.
Right. So it's a matter of working amongst everyone, as the chief has been saying, all departments getting involved and doing their part.
I have a question for the chief that wasn't part of what, I was going to ask you about disposition of records. Have you done any of that lately? Are you good to go? Are you up to date?
You talking about retention records?
Yeah.
I'm good.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't, I haven't run downstairs. It was filmed from head to toe when I got here. Every year we go through and we look at whatever we have to do with it and then we'll come back to you with the.
To be able to do it legally, right.
Yeah. We follow state retention records.
And I was, I'll have the same question for Micah when we get there, I guess. Just wondering how, how the borough's done it. Thank you.
Yeah, but if you ever want to see it, I'll show you the room that we have everything and I got the rules right up there, what we're allowed and what we're not allowed to do. Before I got here, that was non-existent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 8C, manager's report.
Just two real quick things. I won't be long. One, I did inform council that we did receive the American Relief Fund Act monies and, and looking into what we can and cannot spend it on. And once we get more information, we will be looking into doing a few things around the borough.
How much was that, Micah, ballpark?
Just over $400,000. It comes in two installments. I think it was 454. Half of it this year and half of it next year at the same time. That's, we get the 800.
When did you send that out, Micah?
Last week, I believe I sent it out.
Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday or Thursday is when we got it.
Thank you.
Yeah. The second thing is, in this last set of bills, we did spend some recreation money to get new basketball nets. And once public work gets back up to par and have enough people, they will be putting them in the park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, I just have one question? Sorry, Ted. I just realized that there are cell towers on top of the Stockholm building and that those cell towers generated revenue for the owner of that building. So now that we have it at the redevelopment authority, who is getting that revenue? Should Morrisville be getting that revenue or is that going to the redevelopment authority?
I don't think they took. Yeah, that's still, that's still in litigation. That hasn't, that hasn't been finalized yet.
Yep, meaning the RDA doesn't really own it.
No, they don't own it. No, they're, they're working with the county on putting together a legal advancement, we can say. But other than that, there, there, there hasn't been a change in title.
Okay, so is, so as part two of that question, I don't know if that's the tallest building or not the tallest building, but is there any way that we could get those cell phone, cell phone towers on a borough property in order to get revenue from that?
I mean, the assumption is that somebody's getting money monthly. I'm not sure that that's the case. Sometimes they pay those contracts out in advance. So the owner that's been kind of missing in action may have cashed it in already for all I know. We don't have copies of the contract, so I don't know.
And if I remember right, Mr. Mitchell was talking about for a while about the advancements of 5G and the smaller antennas that are needed and, you know, how eventually that they'll be on utility poles and stuff like that and that type.
Oh, okay, so we can't benefit. Okay.
Because that discussion had come up before.
In reference to the tall building, the towers, Presbyterian Towers is tallest and it does have many, many cell phone towers on it.
Okay, I have one quick comment. I think last month we may have asked for the engineer to come in and give an update on the grant for the levy certification. Can we?
Yeah, we did.
Have him come in next month or provide something to us?
I was actually going to suggest that because it's been a while. I will speak with Gomor and have them come in next need. Any other questions? All right, we're going to move on to 8D, committee reports. Does anyone have anything they want to report? All right, hearing none, then I'll go on with mine. On June 30th, there was a Parks and Open Space Committee meeting. There was discussion involving musical events in the park and possibly movie night, since this was something that Mr. Mitchell had suggested last year and actually was, there was money budgeted for that. So there was some discussion of dates and stuff like that. And I had already been in contact with the administration about that. And we had been going back and forth with Premier Movie Nights, which is the company that Mr. Mitchell had been working with. And they, their president actually was very saddened to hear that Mr. Mitchell had passed away and was willing to honor any date that we, that we picked this year. So there will be a movie night in September on the, September 18th, from 8:00 to 10:30 in the park by the stage area. And then there was discussion of music events, which is something also that the administration had been talking about, something that Mr. Mitchell also had wanted to do. And tentatively scheduled right now are two events in August. Well, they're not tentatively, they're, we're waiting for a final word from the, from the artists. One had already issued an invoice to the borough and the other one we're waiting to get from. And it will be the 14th, which will be, I mean.
Who issued us an invoice?
Oh. Let me pull that other information up. The August 14th will be Lisa Bouchard, who's a local resident from the area. And then on the 28th will be the First Time Around Band, which its drummer is actually a Morrisville borough resident. And September events are still being worked on.
Ted, you said somebody issued us an invoice already?
Well, it's a, so that they, it's an invoice with just showing how much they're charging and stuff like that.
And what is that?
300. 300. And I believe the First Time Around Band, which we're waiting on, is 600. Also, there was discussion, about Labor Day, which the mayor, we're waiting to hear back from the mayor, but in absence of hearing back from the mayor, we've, the administration has begun to reach out to the vendors that were there last year and that, that work is in progress and something will be pulled off in time for Labor Day.
And how much money was budgeted for these events?
For the music events, it was 8,000, but we won't even come close to that. Between the movie night and other events, there was 8,000 on top of what was all the 2,000, 2,400 or something that was already in that, that line item, but it won't even be half.
I have a question, Mr. Parker. Is it, is it not money also set aside for Labor Day? Would that be included?
The Labor Day, yes, everything for Labor Day, there's a separate.
Separate, so.
Separate line item for that as well. Yeah. So, again, it's, it's not to, it's not to spend money, you know, just to spend it, it's to make sure that we get the best value we can for what, what we're trying to accomplish in, in the borough. So this is, that's pretty much it.
Mr. President? I know, we lost Scott, so he's your representative from the Civil Service Committee.
Scott, are you still there?
Okay, so just to give you a heads up, the Civil Service Committee, we have 18 finalists for oral interviews on August 2nd, August 3rd for the position of police officers and they will be tested by three chiefs and we should have, we're hoping by the end of September to have this process done with. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the update. Scott, are you with us?
Yep, I'm here, I just hit my mute button.
Did you hear the update from the chief about the civil service?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there anything, anything you wanted to add? Is there anything you wanted to add?
No, no, that's, no, that was, no, that's fine. That's, that's, that's where we're at right now. Nope, that was fine.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to action items. Nine A, call for a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 gasoline and diesel annual bid contract through the Bucks County Consortium. Unlettered regular gasoline, PAPCO at, geez, 0.1813 per gallon delivery charge, market fluctuation pricing. On-road ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel by PAPCO at 0.2307 per gallon delivery charge, market fluctuation, fluctuation pricing. My mouth is getting dry. Off-road diesel fuel number two, die diesel Colonial Industries at 0.2774 per gallon delivery charge, market fluctuation pricing. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
I have a quick question. The delivery charge, so this price includes the delivery charge or the delivery charge fluctuates?
No, the actual.
The dollar amount there is the delivery charge. Yes, we pay, when we order, they pay the market price per gallon at that time, plus that delivery.
It's significantly cheaper than what you see on signs.
Okay.
Significantly.
I assume that's because there's no taxes on it because it's government.
Correct.
Anyone else? Virginia, roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Lawlow?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
All right, nine B, call for a motion to move the regular Marsville Borough Council meetings from the third Monday of each month to the third Tuesday of each month. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, uh, moved and a second, discussion?
I'd just like to say I can't do this, I already have a meeting scheduled every Tuesday, third Tuesday, because of the council meeting, we moved it to Tuesdays.
Anyone else? Hearing none, Virginia can do a roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Bowers?
No.
Ms. Lawlow?
Well, I mean, I hate to, I mean, I hate to say yes, but, but Justin is leaving council and so how many meetings would that be? When is, would this affect?
A year. It would be the next one.
So it would be August, September, October, November, December? That's five months, Justin. I know you, you made a motion, but like, do you have a problem if we do that or?
Yeah.
Like, who's not gonna vote? Can we, can we make this effective January?
Point of order, we're out of discussion on this, aren't we?
We are.
Well, I, I didn't have a moment to, to think after Justin, I'm sorry, just started. Then I'm gonna vote no. I'll wait till, I mean, unless you move to start this effective date in December, I mean, January, I'll have to vote no.
Okay. Virginia?
Mr. Nickel?
No.
Mr. Paul?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
I'm, I'm gonna go with no because this is something we can, we can revisit this in January, just for, just for Justin's sake, it's five more months. I mean, it, either night, doesn't work for me either, Thursdays would be best for me, so, you know, everybody wanted to keep it on Monday last year, so within five more months to keep it on Monday, we can, we can open it up in January again, so I'll vote no.
Mrs. Sherlock?
I'm not sure what the purpose of it was, I was just, I figured there was a reason. I'm just gonna say yes because I was willing to say yes until I heard all this.
Mr. Jaeger?
No.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes. All right, motion fails. Moving on to.
I, I mean, I, I think you can revisit this in a couple of months and we'll.
No problem.
I would vote yes.
Moving on to nine C, call for a motion to advertise the zoning ordinance amendment concerning the regulation of smoke shops and tobacco stores.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
I, I have a, we'll call it one good question at least. So I went through, I read it all and it, it makes sense. My question is, has anybody looked at it from the aspect, because this was the first I actually got to see it, has anybody looked at it from the aspect of what we currently have and if it was in place, would anything be different? In other words, I know it calls for like 150 feet from, or 1,000 feet from the school, 1,000 feet from, you know, a bunch of different things, 1,000 feet from each, from another smoke shop, but in, if that were the case right now, would we have any fewer smoke shops?
I would think going forward, we would.
Well, but, okay, so, fine, but what I'm asking is, is there a wholesale difference to what we currently have? So I get that this wouldn't affect what's already there, but in, in theory, what I'm asking is, is there, like, what we're doing here is fine, but do we look at it from the aspect of, okay, we already have a problem that we're trying to resolve or is this not really addressing the problem? Is 1,000 feet too many? Is it too few? Is it, like, I, I'm just, I, I'm, I'm betting, I'm guessing, because this is the first we're getting to talk about it, that this is probably mirrored from other municipalities and, and it's something proven that works, is that?
Yeah, it's mirrored from other municipalities, the 1,000 feet, other municipalities have different amounts. A thousand feet, it's, that's what I'm looking for here, I don't think it's good terms, but it's the same dist, there we go, same distance for marijuana dispensaries.
Okay.
Keeping those the same, treating these the same is the idea there, keeping it close to that was the idea, 1,000 feet.
Thank you. So I guess what I'm, what I'm wondering as, as somebody who's gonna vote on this, is, is that enough? Because I, I don't see, and listen, I, I can't look at an area and say that's 1,000 feet, that's not 1,000 feet, I just don't know, but if, if I were to know that if this were in place, we'd have four less shops and that would make a wholesale difference to our town, I'd, I'd feel different about it, but we're kind of going into this not even really knowing if that's gonna affect any change in town, in my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Parker?
Yes?
I, I think it may help us in the future. I mean, there was a, there's a shop down on Bridge Street that closed down about a year and a half ago and no one's moved back in there, so, I mean, that, that's good. But I did have a few questions I had emailed to Scott, but I don't even know, because it was very late, so I don't even know if you got those four questions or not.
Yeah, I saw some of them. If you want to go through them, I, I saw them, I was able to look them over and.
Yeah, well, the first question I had is, how are we notifying the current shops when this goes into place?
Well, this is a, this is zoning, so it wouldn't necessarily affect the, the current shops unless they were to expand or change or do things like that. The idea here is, is to focus on what's coming in and what's new, so it's going, it's a going-forward thing, it's a zoning ordinance.
That's right.
So.
And it, it never mentions the current age.
So.
Should that be in there?
It can be, we can add that in there. We looked at that. The reason we didn't add that in there is, it's pretty clear that you can't sell marijuana to people on marijuana, excuse me, I'm back on marijuana now, can't sell tobacco to people under 21, so the focus of the aging there was the requirements for, you know, who you can employ, like, a person under the age of 17 is not allowed to sell tobacco, nicotine, so that was that there. The reason a lot of places, I've looked at this and looking at the one that we've drafted here, that they don't put the age in there to keep people off the premises is because some of these, the way it's written and the way some of these things are operated, some of them are just legitimate convenience stores, gas stations could fall under this, where people under the age of, I guess now it's 21, I was gonna say under the age of 18, under the age of 21 have a legitimate purpose to be on there. So the idea is you didn't want to restrict those people in those situations where it's not just a smoking tobacco shop, but if we wanted to add that in there, that's something.
No, I, I just didn't know the, the legal ramifications of it all, but, so, you can't, because they also talk about the, the employee.
Right.
Must be 20, must be of age. But it doesn't say what age that is.
Yeah, it's, well, it's minor, so anyone under the age of 18 is not allowed to sell nicotine and tobacco, just like someone under the age of 18 is not allowed to serve alcohol in a restaurant, it's the same idea. Even though they can't consume it themselves, they can be an employee.
So, and that's a given for most people, but it doesn't specify that, so I just didn't know if it's.
I mean, we, we could specify the age to be 18, under the age of 18, but.
Only if it was necessary.
But the, the term minor has a legal definition of people 17 and under.
Right. And then, then I was just wondering, it, has the zoning board, did we talk to the zoning board about this? I don't think we did, like, they don't know this is coming, right?
It really wouldn't affect them, this would be put in as a conditional use, so it would actually come to council for review.
Okay.
And you'd be able, because this is a, the difference between conditional use, special exception, is conditional use is, you know, you focus more on community development, community growth.
Well, I don't believe that they need to know before we do it, take any action, but I think as a courtesy, it wouldn't be a bad idea for us to make sure that they're aware of what we're doing.
Yeah, we can notify.
And that, that really, that was more of a, I think I put that in there, that it was more of a question for administration better than you.
Yeah, no, we, we can definitely notify them, because obviously we have to notify the planning commission as well, and I believe you had one more about the, was it the discounts?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that's.
You're not allowed to give coupons.
Right, there is, there is federal law about that as well and it's very specific under the federal law as well as the state, so yes, we can actually be more, again, we can be more restrictive than what they have and put in our own regulations.
Okay. So I have, so, just to be clear, so like Smoking Joes is 1,000 feet from the canal, which is a state park, so we can't touch them, they, they can continue to operate. However, if they were to sell, then a new cigarette shop could not move in there?
It really depends on how, we'd have to look at the specific situation, you know, land use, zoning, it's very fact-specific, so we would have to, we couldn't say yes or no particularly right now, it really depends on how it happens and the timing of if there was a sale, is the best way I can explain it. It, it really is a, when it comes to zoning and when it comes to land use, it's very fact-intensive, so without the specific situation presenting itself, we can't say one way or the other.
But if this had been, so like the hairdresser place that was on Crown Street, if this had been in place, when that place sold, that smoke shop could never have opened, because that also is 1,000 feet from the canal.
It would apply and, it would apply, I can't, like, I don't know the distances, so.
Yeah, I, I'm, it is.
That would apply, yeah, if this was in place, yes, that would apply, if it was a change in use, yes.
Okay, so 1,000 feet is about three lengths of a football field, a little more.
Yes.
One-fifth of a mile. Yeah. Okay. Is there anything that we can add to this to number, to, to limit the number of like businesses in town?
That, the idea of that is the distance apart, is the way you do.
Okay. All right. Okay.
I have a number of comments and questions. My first comment is, when I saw this on the agenda, I kind of thought this was deja vu of last month where an ordinance appeared that, that was on the agenda that we hadn't previously discussed, I didn't know where it came from, why it was there. Then I got an email today at about 3:15 from the solicitor with this ordinance, but I don't know why the solicitor was working on it, who sent it there, and why it came from them before we had a discussion. So my other concerns are, we have an item on the agenda for voting that we got at 3:00 in the afternoon, the day, the day of a meeting. I know I was at work, I had a busy day, I didn't have time to read it and, you know, I'm, I'm not prepared because it was sent to us last minute, so I'm glad that we're having all this discussion, but I was also, you know, I tried to let everybody go because I'm gonna call for a motion to table this so that we can have a proper time to review it.
And Scott, I think you had mentioned that once it's in process, we're, we're okay, is that this conversation that puts us in a position to hold off?
We have, we have a motion, it has to be advertised, but we have a, we have a motion to table. We have to move on that.
Yeah. Right.
Did he just make that motion?
Yes.
Oh, I knew you said you were going to, I just did.
Well, let's discuss, I'm, I'm going to make it, how about that? But if we want to discuss for, I don't want to stop the discussion, I, I want to have the discussion, but I also want to know, put you on notice that I'm gonna make that motion shortly, it's to come, in case anybody else has any comments they want to make.
Scott?
So I want to, oh, answer Mr. Jaeger's question, we, we would need to advertise it for it to be, for the pending ordinance to want to take effect.
Thank you.
We do it here, we need to advertise. With regard to, this is something that came up very late, yes, we didn't realize it was something that was done, it was asked of us very late in, I mean, in the week, it was on Friday and we got it done as quickly as we could. Again, what we're doing here is looking to advertise this, we're looking to put it out there. It's still up for discussion, it's still up to be changed. Obviously, there's rules about that because it has to go to the planning commission and whatnot and how the changes can work, but generally, as long as you're not putting in something new substantively, i.e., we're talking about, the best example I can give, EG would be the right one, but we're talking about tobacco and smoke shops, now we're gonna put in something into this ordinance about muffler shops, that's where you get into trouble. Small tweaks to the, the general substance, you can continue to do, you can continue to make. The idea here is just getting this out there, getting the borough protected and putting the people on notice and that way we can get it to the planning commissions, our planning commission and the Bucks County Planning Commission for their reviews as well as quickly as possible.
So I also want to just add that last year I brought a similar ordinance up to everyone's discussion, I, I don't recall what meeting, but we were sitting here and I read different ordinances that towns had that were similar to this, and then at executive session, I don't know if it was last month or the prior month, I had asked, is there something to do? And perhaps Randy is the one that went forward with it because it was during executive and I said we have to, I, because Randy was talking about, I forget if it was the den or the lounge, but I also asked again, is there something we can do? And then we've got this.
Right, I want to piggyback on that, actually, Councilwoman Alajo forwarded an ordinance that was on, on the books in Milford, Pennsylvania, which is also a river town that is off of, you know, on the Delaware, that had the same problem, like influx of cigarette shops and stuff like that, and it was enacted in, what, 2018?
Yeah, 2018.
2018, so it's, it's a few years old and I forwarded to the solicitor. There are several vacant properties in town that were either former smoke shops or could be converted to a smoke shop. As New Jersey continues to raise its taxes on cigarettes, it becomes more attractive to open one up on a river town, and since this legislation had stood the test of time, I thought it was prudent to send it off to the solicitor and have them tweak it. This wasn't a major rewrite, this wasn't an invention of, you know, the we all, this was just simply a tweak to make it fit here in Marsville. And that's where, where we are right now, so. Anyone else?
Can I, yeah, can I add something to this? I know it, it's, you, you would, it would be difficult to, uh, to catch a lot of people, but it could also be a deterrent. I know that there's like, there's laws on the books that are probably 200 years old of taking, um, like taxable products like liquor, cigarettes and whatnot across state lines. Um, with, like, if we got, like, we'd probably have to be the state police or something in town just to have a presence, just to, just to, like, maybe as a deterrence, if nothing else, and maybe slow it down a little bit. Um, because we're never, I mean, like, you, like you said, Ted, as long as the taxes in New Jersey keep going up on cigarettes, we're going to come over here and buy them. So I know they were, they used to do stings down at Roger Wilco, the liquor store in Burlington by the Bristol Bridge, and they used to follow people with Pennsylvania tags across the Burlington Bristol Bridge, and they used to get them for, uh, you know, transporting, you know, liquor without paying the tax over the state line. The same thing with the cigarettes, and it's, you know, it's no sig, no secret who's coming over to our smoke shops and, and buying the cigarettes. But, I mean, that would be, like, I, I doubt George and, and our department could do this, that would probably be, that would have to be a state thing.
I think it's, yeah, it, it's, and I think there's limits on what you can, on what, what trigger that. I'm sorry.
Sell it again, you pay the tax, it will rule on constitution.
You want to add anything to that?
Uh, no, not as more, yeah, it's just one of those, it's a tough thing to enforce. Generally, it's done by the state police when they do that, and, you know, there are issues with it from a standpoint as it relates.
Yeah.
Alcohol's a little bit different. I know where you're going, Mr. Robinson, alcohol is a little bit different than cigarettes, so it's, it's a little bit different of an issue, but I understand your point and.
Yeah. Mr. Parker?
Go ahead.
I just want to say, I'm, I'm very happy that, that Helen found this. I also am happy that the state has finally conceded to some of the things that, you know, most residents were looking for. Some years ago, we looked at this, and the best we could come up with at the time on the books of law was, you couldn't have two smoke shops in the same property, the same building. So say, you know, say the Stockholm building decided to have one upstairs and downstairs, that wouldn't have been, wouldn't have been allowed. So, um, but there was no problem with having it, you know, next to each other. So I'm very happy, and I think that the residents will be happy as well. But to everybody's point, the ones that are here are here, and here to stay, I'm sure.
I just have one more quick comment. I'm going to refrain from my motion that I was throwing out there now that I know where this came from, what the purpose of it is, and what the goal is. I think it's something that everybody's been talking about for years, and.
Right. I, I think the public has been asking for this of us, and we, we were, we were lucky that, that, uh, Councilwoman Halaho found it for us.
My pleasure.
It's, it's a team effort. I mean, we all need to, to do this more than, than figure among ourselves.
Exactly. If we just all pull together, we can make the town a lot better.
Okay. Any other discussion? Virginia, can we do a roll call on this?
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Halaho?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously. 90, a call for a motion to approve, uh, executing the resolution required for resubmitting the application in the amount of $454,823 for the Automated Red Light Enforcement Program grant through PennDOT for Pennsylvania Avenue and Philadelphia Avenue intersection. Upfront cost to reapply $2,500 to $3,000. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion?
My only discussion is I believe these next two, we actually voted on last month to approve the, doing this, this is just to approve the actual resolution by the governing body.
Yep. Anyone else? Do this, uh, we'll just do it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. 90, a call for a motion to approve executing the resolution required for resubmitting the application in the amount of $200,000 for the Automated Red Light Enforcement Program grant through PennDOT for upgrades to existing traffic signals with battery backups, generator plugs, and pre-amplification. Upfront cost to reapply $2,500 to $3,000. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. 9F, a call for a motion to appoint Judith Danko as Open Records Officer and Borough's Secretary effective her first day of employment.
Some moved.
Second.
We're all first and second.
Discussion?
Um, quick comment, I don't recall offhand, did we discuss this with her? I know it's kind of assumed it comes with the position, we should probably make sure she was okay with it.
Ms. Danko?
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Yes, I'm perfectly fine with, with each of those items.
Awesome.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good point, Justin. Any other discussion?
Thank you very much for your consideration.
All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. 9G, uh, motion for municipal authority appointment, when you, one appointment to fill the open position with an unexpired term of 42 months, term expires January 4th, 2025. And I have a nomination.
I'd like to nominate Rory Snare for this position, please.
Nomination for Rory Snare. Any other nominations? All right, hearing no other nominations, we're going to close that. Virginia, uh, you know what, we'll just do an affirmation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I hear two opposed abstentions. Motion passes. Rory Snare is appointed to the municipal authority. Moving on to 9H, call for a motion to censure Mike, Councilman Mike Jaeger for violating the secrecy of executive session. Can I have a motion?
Some moved.
Can I have a second?
I'll second that for discussion.
Discussion?
Great. I'd like to discuss it, too.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I'd like to, to understand, I, I saw the emails go around in, in the group, and I chose to ignore them because they were a little silly, but, um, what specifically are we talking about here?
Uh, my understanding is having an interview with the press, releasing the name of our manager, uh, who we had not, uh, who had been, who had been picked and decided under the protections of executive, uh, session.
Okay, so I, I received an email outside of the executive session, um, expressing that she accepted the offer. So that was outside of executive session. I have it in my emails. Anything else that was brought up?
I don't think that that was, that was just a contingent offer. I don't think that that was an offer.
I have a, I have a congratulations, the, the offer was accepted.
I know, but it.
In an email outside of executive session. We all do.
I, I understand that, but she's still, um, uh.
I think this is, this is.
I'm sorry, I have the floor.
It's silly, but go ahead.
I, I, the problem, I think, is that, um, it was contingent.
That's right.
On her passing the background exam.
That's not what it says. It says, congratulations, she accepted the offer. I'm not so, Ms. Danko, by the way, I'm very excited to have you, I think you're going to be a great addition to this, to this borough, and, um, your success will be our success. I'm very excited to have you. This is silly, though, guys, but I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to actually let you guys do your thing, vote on it. Was there anything else that was, other than the name, was there anything else that was allegedly something that was out of executive session?
I think, I mean, Justin did the right thing by not, not confirming.
I'm asking specifically, was there anything other than the name that you guys are accusing me of taking out of executive session when I have an email that says congratulations? It wasn't in executive session.
The entire process was under executive section, executive, executive session protection, the entire process.
Okay.
Until it was made public.
So just.
Had not alerted.
Just the name, although I have an email, just the, Ms. Danko's name, when I'm just excited that we have somebody with experience that's going to come in and, and I have high hopes for this position.
The reason for it being protected is the individual had not informed her employer yet.
We had an email that said congratulations.
Had not notified her employer yet.
We could argue that, but that's not.
Reason why it was under executive session.
But that's not what you're, what you're admonishing me here for, because that's really all you're doing, is what you're admonishing me for is taking something out of the secrecy of an executive session. This did not come out of an executive session, it was, it was a separate email.
Personnel issues are always executive, it doesn't really matter if it's in an email or, or a verbal conversation.
There's an accepted agreement, it's.
Tentative, it's a tentative agreement.
It was still under executive session.
And, and we hadn't even met as, we hadn't even made a motion to, to make the offer private, the, public yet.
It had already been announced at, at a council meeting that we had found somebody as well. And then days later, after the email came out that congratulations, outside of executive session, but you guys do, do what you think is right.
I'm sorry, Mikey, this, 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 this article came out on a Sunday or a Monday, and we had, and, and then we had the meeting with the approval.
That's not correct.
That is correct.
Okay.
What, what does this involve?
It involves, uh.
No, but I'm saying, like, what, so we, so this is all, so the motion's here, so what, what's, uh, what are the results of that emotion?
What's the penalty?
Yeah.
We're admonishing one of our own for disclosing information outside, outside of executive session that wasn't, that wasn't.
So it's an, it's an admonishment, and that, and that's.
That's it, that's all it is, it's saying bad boys. The Robert's rules, that's all you can do.
I'm getting, I'm getting an ethics, uh, I guess, an ethics lesson from somebody who sends out emails to the entire group and, and breaks the sunshine law. Fantastic. Let's do this.
I'm sure, if you were to ask Judy, I'm sure she wasn't very happy about the article coming out before she was able to speak to her employer.
I, I actually have faith that Ms. Danko is a strong, very well-suited individual that can handle much more strife than that.
Why did we have to give her any strife? Exactly.
We did.
Well, I don't, I do not want to put her on trial here right now, and I don't think that she should have to answer these questions.
My only comment on this, just because I'll get it in before we wrap up, is I kind of agree with Mike, where, you know, it's a little confusing, we had an agreement in place, um, and I understand what you're saying about protecting Ms. Danko's anonymity, but that's, executive session is for the borough, it doesn't, it's not to protect Ms. Danko, who wasn't with the borough. So, um, I don't see that argument per se. Personally, I answered the way I did because I thought it was just a professional courtesy to not give out Ms. Danko's name until I know, until I personally had known she'd given her 30 days' notice. If I'd known that, that she had, I would have provided it. That's the only difference between my name in that article and Mike's, is I was asked, and I didn't know if she had given notice, and if she had, then I would have said the same thing Mike did and gave the name.
Well, at, at that point, I think, right, she had not, because.
Right. All right. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have one more question. Is Scott there, Scott Holbert, the attorney?
Yes.
Can, can, um, can I hear Scott's, um, legal opinion on this?
That would be protected by executive session.
Email. What's that?
Uh, there, there really is no legal opinion I can give on this motion. This is, this is, this is a, this is a council matter and.
It's a, it's a hearing, and that's it, right?
Yes, it's it.
Does it, does, 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 okay, then, then Scott, my question is, does.
Well, what I think, moving forward, I think, since some people have confusion as to what is continued, part of a continued executive session, which was all the interviews and everything else, then from now on, we will absolutely make sure that there is a clear heading on it of any discussion about any personnel issue, any hiring, any firing, or anything that has been discussed in executive session. Moving forward, since people are confused as to when executive session ends, we will make sure it's on, on all emails and all physical pieces of paper. With that, if there's no other further discussion, we're going to go to a vote. Virginia, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowers?
No.
Ms. Halaho?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
No.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Aye, I'm staying.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Motion passes. So silly. All right, moving on to 9I, which is a motion to approve the grievance settlement agreement with the borough, between the borough and the PBA. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Not much discussion we can have on this, it's just the nay or yea.
My, um, quick question on that. Is there more we can tell the public? I mean, just a motion to approve an agreement, should we be more specific about what the agreement is?
How about just say grievance?
It's a grievance.
A grievance agreement, maybe?
Yeah. Um, what we, what else we can give out is this was a grievance filed by a member of the police officer under the CBA, and it's resulting in a $1,200 settlement.
Great.
Thanks. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes. 9J, a motion to approve, hm? Oh.
Was there a, was there a no on that, or was that just an echo, a delay?
I believe it was the delay. Uh, I believe that, Mr. Robinson, on that last motion, was your vote a yes?
Yes, it was a yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we were just checking, there was a little bit of a delay and it came up a little, as Ted was saying, for the nay, so we believed it was delay, we just wanted to check, thank you.
9J, a motion to approve an independent medical examination for an injured police officer. Can I have a motion, please?
Some moved.
Second. Motion in a second.
I have another comment on that. Given that there may be some cost to this, can we add something to cap costs or just put a rough cost in there, or at least acknowledge that there will be costs that the borough may incur? We vote yes on this?
We could, yes.
Or is my discussion good enough?
There could be a cost. I mean, your discussion's good enough, we could put something in there. I wouldn't have a recommendation at this time, but there will, there would be a cost as this would be something paid for by the borough, yes.
But is there also a cost, attorney costs?
There's your, this is part of our general work. There wouldn't be extra costs outside of reviewing the document.
Yes, there would be costs. There's always costs.
Yeah, there's always costs, but there wouldn't be, we wouldn't participate in it other than reviewing the documents that were sent to us.
Okay. Mr. Parker?
Yes.
If this police officer is covered under his insurance, would none of that pick that up?
It's possible, but I can't say for sure because if the doctor isn't participating in that plan, there could be issues, but there could be other issues as well as where the ones asking for it.
Right, we're asking for it.
Okay.
Workers' comp. Can't put that on your blue cross. Right.
Okay, workers, okay. The chief said regarding workers' comp, you can't put them on your blue cross because I know they can't hear you.
And I don't think we would want it to fall under that anyway because it's independent. We want somebody being paid by the borough for their opinion.
Have help lies right now? Do we, do we have any update on his situation?
We really shouldn't be talking about the.
Right.
It's up or down vote whether to adopt.
Yeah.
That's executive.
Right, that's part of executive session, we can't discuss that here.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. It's the end of the action items. 10 other business?
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Parker, I have a couple of things.
Under announcements? Under borough officials? All right, so no other business, so moving on to 11, borough officials. Sherlock?
Couple of things. I will try to be brief. Let's see, I already mentioned about the possibility of fines for Republic. Artis and Marswell has, have had talks recently about doing some murals in town. It's not, it's not a new idea. It's not, it's just something I think that they're going to try to move forward with more vigorously than they have in the past. So I'm really just kind of making that announcement, but obviously if it's on borough property somewhere, we would have to approve. I also ran into Mr. Jones from the high school because he was the gentleman I was, he was one of the teachers I was working with with regards to how the backdrop for the stage was going to take place, but then the pandemic happened and it never happened. So he said he's hoping that next year they'll be able to fit it into the curriculum. So also, I had mentioned the directive 225 regarding impoundment. We've had that in our possession now for a few months and I have asked the questions and they've been answered and I'd like to see if we could just put that on the agenda for next month.
Okay, we'll add it.
Pass in the past, if we could get moving on that. Is there, this is for the solicitor. Is there anything that could be done about private properties that have truly obscene signs or things of that nature on their yard?
The simple answer is no. It's going to be 99,999 times out of 100,000 protected by the First Amendment. To find that, you know, less than 1% chance of the time that it's not, it's very difficult. I mean, outside of, outside of direct threats, signs on your own property, probably you're covered and even then, direct threats theoretically can be covered as well depending on how specific they are.
Does it work anywhere near a school system?
No, it doesn't. Where it is, location and anything like that doesn't change things, no.
Okay. Been approached about it.
No, I understand.
Didn't think, I know it's first amendment, but I just thought I'd ask.
Yes, no, it's a fair question and it's the right thing to do.
And then, again, it's only a couple of weeks away. The household hazardous waste collection, again, I think we announce this every month, but it's August 14th and it's at the Bucks County Tech High School. So I think you can find more information on our borough website regarding that. Also, there were two, two announcements that we received from the PSAB and one is about the Sunshine Act. The requirements have changed a bit. Now, we, we actually almost cover all the requirements that they mentioned. It's Act 65, but one that is in there that we don't, I don't believe we do, is actually put a copy of the agenda posted outside on our kiosk. Now, if we have it on the, on our website, I think it would be, you know, that should cover it, but it lists it as something separate from the website, so I don't know if that's something we have to do or not. And then, the second one is called, it's House Bill 1621, and I think we might have to move on this one unless you even know, I don't know. It's regarding expansion of the 5G technology and it establishes standards for deploying small cell infrastructures while preserving local authority over the rights of way. And they said, if you don't get in, if you don't get in there quick enough, if we don't do something sooner than later, it could end up being harmful for us. Is that something you're familiar with?
Yeah, I'll start with your first one about the agenda. We have copies of the agenda here. That's really what it's.
That's covered.
Yes, that's what, that's what it's addressing with the kiosk.
Okay, because it does mention that too. It mentions having it public at the meeting, but it also mentioned all four, but that's all right. If you think we're covered, we're covered.
And as for the cell tower issue, that's an issue everywhere. Yeah, they're, they're looking to change the law. That's been going on for, I want to say at least three years off the top of my head that I can think about it. It's probably been longer, but there have been changes proposed and the idea is, they tell you if you don't do something now, you're not going to be able to do later. We can take a look at it, but I'm going to tell you the way these laws are being written and the way they're changing it, whether you do something now, that's something now, it's not going to make a difference. They're going to do what they, when the law's changed, they're going to do what they can to supersede items. So outside of the way these, the way these laws have been going and the issues that people have been having, I think Doylestown Borough is the best example I can give from Bucks County recently and what they've done is, it's to, when people approach you, when the, you know, Verizon, AT&amp;T, what's the other big one? They have a different company, it's Crown Castle. When they come to you to look to install things, the idea would be to work with them. You know, what we've seen from the way these laws are turning and how municipalities have interacted, if you work with them, you can get what you want out of it. If you resist, they find a way around it, is the best way.
So let's not waste any money on any new ordinance or protection.
Yeah, generally these things, the way they are writing these laws and trying to change the laws is to supersede all local zoning ordinances and other land development use, regular, general code ordinances.
Okay. So we, this was talked about at the last meeting. Can we, and I think it should be very simple to me, I think it would only be a paragraph. Can we amend our animal ordinance to exclude roosters? And now, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I know that, I think, probably maybe a number of us have had calls about it. And then also chickens were mentioned. I mean, I don't really have a problem with chickens, but if you have 12 chickens, that might be a bit of a problem. But can we restrict the number of chickens? But I definitely think we should be restricting roosters.
Yes, it's something, you know, there's other animals that are restricted, just like you can restrict other things, you can restrict, you know, ownership of specific types of animals. Yeah, something that can be looked at, something that could be done.
But is that something this council's, you know, can, I mean, I don't know if we have to have a vote on it, but just to have him look our animal ordinance over? I think it's, I don't remember now, I had it last month, I think eight, eight sixty-seven or something like that.
I agree, you know, as Ted was saying, we get lots of complaints from our neighbors and I think it's something that we all are interested in and maybe Scott can take a crack at it and circulate something that we can then, on and on. But roosters seem to be one of the big problems and also excessive numbers of chickens, you know, and depending upon how much debris that they.
Debris.
Promulgate, yeah, exactly. So it's more than just roosters, but anything that's really, just becomes, you know.
Nuisance.
Nuisance for neighbors, that in some way that we can quantify or characterize.
Well, one of the things in our ordinance currently is that the coops have to be 25 feet, I think, from a property line and some of these homes are very small and I don't, I don't believe that code has really enforced that part of our ordinance because, because you're talking.
Some of the coops are like right on the property.
Yes, and that shouldn't be because you're talking about 50 feet just side to side and most homes are just 50 feet wide. I might be wrong in that.
Maybe we need to revisit that too because if you're not going to allow roosters and chickens aren't allowed and they're not bothering the neighbors, I mean, probably 20 years ago when they wrote this, it wasn't popular to have backyard chickens and have your own eggs and that's kind of come full spin again.
Yes.
So we may want to revisit those as well. But I would also suggest rather than sending it to the attorney first, that it gets sent to the policy and ordinance committee to review. Those meetings, you know, once they put a meeting out there, it's for the public and all of council could show up if they wanted to give input because it's an advertised meeting.
But we already have one on the books. It just would just be a matter of putting roosters in with the undesirables.
Well, it's also enforcing the current ordinance, which isn't being enforced, which is the, where the coops are in people's yards.
But to that point, the 25 feet, I think is kind of, I think it's, if you, if we keep it at 25 feet, we're basically saying 70% of Marswell cannot have chickens because there's just no.
And so then be it.
Well, I don't know if I'm, I don't know if I'm, I don't know if I want to go that direction.
Well, but there's an ordinance currently that isn't being followed.
Okay. I agree about the ordinance committee because that was my last thing that I was going to mention about having, I'd like to have an ordinance meeting if we could. And there was a couple of ordinances I wanted to address, but I mean, we can address it, but I think we've just both hit the nail on the head right here about roosters.
Well, I'm fine if you want to engage the attorney just to throw in roosters, but then you also threw in the other thing about the number of chickens. I think that needed discussion and to figure out, you know, is the number based on square footage of a pen area or is it square footage of a yard, you know? Seems like a discussion for people to have and especially to bring people who have chickens in and maybe even their neighbors, so they can either say, yes, I'm for it or, you know, no, they make a mess, no, that, you know, don't allow more than two, I hate them, whatever.
At the policy.
Yeah.
Committee meeting, yeah.
Because I can tell you, there's going to be a number of people that come in when they hear about chickens because they have chickens, they love chickens.
I think, I don't think we should get rid of chickens. I just, I, but, no, I'm all for chicken coops too. I just, just don't know about the numbers. I mentioned the numbers, but I'm not opposed to it. I'm not married to six versus 12 or whatever. I am married to getting rid of chicken, I mean, roosters, okay? That is, that's.
All right, there was something that I forgot to bring up earlier. Dave Nae's neighbors had gotten together and pooled money together to put up a sign at the bridge that he had helped rebuild, that he had organized and helped rebuild. Scott seems to think we need a motion, we should have a motion to put the, to address putting a plaque there. Is anybody opposed to opening it up to public comment real fast so that?
I think we should because I have a couple of comments.
I'm not opposed to it, but are you sure? It's DCNR property. It's not our property.
Exactly.
But it's our bridge.
It's our bridge.
On our bridge, it's ours.
Fair enough.
Where is it going? On the bridge?
If it has to be on the bridge or right next to it, I don't know.
I mean, what is, what is it that they're putting up?
A plaque honoring him and for his, I haven't seen, actually seen the physical, have you seen the physical plaque?
No.
No.
Yeah, I'm just wondering where on the bridge it would go.
Well, originally it was, should we like open it up and then discuss or?
Well, I just want to know if we should even bring it. I mean, we, I think at this point, the best thing, I mean, I know they wanted to get it up, but we may just have to wait till August.
I know that one of the persons that was working this is Josh and, oh, this Josh, a different Josh, and he had another conversation with the park ranger because originally we had a conversation with the park ranger and with Susan Taylor from the Friends of the Delaware and it was determined that they don't allow anything on, actually on the, on property, like it can't be on.
That would have to be on the bridge.
Right, so it could be on the bridge and we do on the bridge, that's true. So, but to put it on the bridge, there was this, the park ranger was going to go get some sort of variance or exception to be able to put it where we want to put it.
Okay.
And that's where it is right now, so I don't really know.
Then maybe we'll wait till August.
I think we.
Okay.
Right, because it's not been purchased yet.
Okay, I thought it was purchased, sorry. So I thought it had already, I thought they were waiting.
No.
All right, so then we'll wait for August then. We'll have more.
I don't have a problem with it, I just don't know.
Yeah, no, no, if it's going to, if it's, yeah, if they can obtain a variance.
I mean, I, when I walk, I walk over that bridge, I could take a look to see where's, I don't know how big it is, but to see a possibility of where it could be.
I know the actual footprint of the bridge goes into the canal, the canal pathway, you know, side of the pathway a little bit, so.
Maybe in the center, well, if they haven't purchased it, maybe they could like make one of those like bench plaques and we could put it in the center of the bridge. I don't really know.
I don't know what they're doing, but they're working on.
Yeah, I don't know what their idea was.
To put it actually.
We were told originally not to put it on the bridge, to put it on a pole.
Right.
Near the bridge.
All right, so we'll leave that for August. When they have more information, they can come, come back to us.
So we can have an ordinance meeting soon?
Yes, we'll have to call an ordinance meeting. I think there were some other things the chief wanted us to look at too, so. Other changes? Don't get, we weren't talking that bad about you, we just, there were some other things other than 205.
Policy directives.
225.
That you wanted us to consider.
I need the formal, any more directives until we finish that.
Okay. Well, if you want to, if you want to work on some more and we'll get them to the policy committee and then get them up for a vote. Okay. Anyone else?
I have two things real quick. Number one, on Saturday, Friends of the Marswell Dog Park will be hosting a dog pool party at the dog park from 1 to 4. We have a giant inflatable sprinkler that's shaped like a fire hydrant, I think it's four or five feet high and have a number of small baby pools filled with water for the dogs and a treat truck instead of the traditional food truck, it's a food truck for dogs. No human food. And another thing, I just hate to circle back to the fireworks issue. I had sent the attorney, Scott, a couple of weeks ago, somebody had mentioned Doylestown Township has an ordinance. I had kind of sent it to him, just to not ask him to write it, but just to take, read through it and see if it actually had any teeth. I hadn't heard back from him. I don't know if he's reviewed it, but I just want to bring it up at this point. I can either forward it to all of council to review or we can ask Scott to just take a look at it and, and give us an opinion as to whether it's something you think would at least give us more teeth to think in.
We reviewed it. I'm sorry, I didn't get back to you. I, when we were on the meeting last time, I thought it came up with Randy, I was, because I was a problem to you, it's my problem, my fault, I'm sorry. To say whether, I mean, I would send it around to everyone in council to review, to say it would have teeth, really couldn't come from us. That would be something more for the chief to really talk about, the enforcement. I mean, enforcing these fireworks, fireworks restrictions, the ones that exist and any ones you can have, it's a real problem, as he can tell you, because the second you, you know, they get there, people disperse or they're not shooting them off, so unless you have, you know, video of someone, it's really tough to enforce, especially when you get to the borough ordinances where it's summary violations because, you know, people complain, they aren't really watching, they're hearing it up in the sky, it might be a neighbor two doors down, so they don't know who's actually sending it off. So it does become an enforcement thing, but it is something you can look at and, you know, look to do that if you are able to properly enforce, it could, you know, have an effect. We're seeing, you know, the enforcement actions, just to bring it back full circle, that the enforcement actions we've been taking against the Hookah Lounge, he seems to be behaving more now. So if you are able to get it to be enforced and they are able to put teeth to it, it could, could bear dividends, yes. It's just, it's one of those things that's extremely difficult to enforce.
Maybe I should clarify, by, by having teeth, I understand the enforcement issue. I also was worried, worried about the legal aspect. Can we do that? Because some municipalities just put something out, just to have something out there that's, you know, if somebody challenges it, it's not going to, it's not going to hold up, but it looks good on their part to put it out there.
No, yeah, the law is specifically written, the state law, that, you know, local regulations can still be written and can still be put into place, you know? And so, yeah, it's something you can look at and take a view of what was done there and what would you, what would you like to include as well?
Okay, I'll forward it to everybody then.
Justin, what time's the part, the pool party?
1 to 4.
No one has anything else? We're going to, 12 adjournment, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?